Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2022 Monthly School Board Meeting. Colleagues, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Motion made by Ms. Consella, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved.
All right, thank you Chair Shea, members of the board, and to our visitors. Good evening, we will begin our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by student guests, and then that will be followed by a moment of silence, which can be used for personal reflection or prayer. So we're going to start with the pledge, and I'd like to welcome students from Adams Elementary. Their principal, Tawana Lowry, is here, who will come to the podium and introduce the students, who will then lead us in the pledge, if you would please stand.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Tawana Lowry, Principal of Adams Elementary School, and I am here to introduce to you all my great fifth graders that I have here that are going to lead us in the pledge tonight. We have Jada, we have Zalea, we have Anthony, we have Grayson, and we have Jayden. So, thank you guys, and take it away. And we'll now have our moment of silence. Thank you.
Thanks again to students for leading us in the pledge. Get seated. And I would like to note that unfortunately, the students from Ratcliffe Elementary, who were to join us for our musical performance highlight, were unable to be with us this evening, and they send their regrets, and we hope to have them join us again for a musical highlight in the future. All right, for the next item, we have a recognition item, and Mr. Mac Baten is going to come forward for that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. Important to the success of any school program is the support of our community and business partners. In 2011, career and technical education lost a huge supporter. I am referring to Mr. Ray Tate. Some knew Mr. Tate as Coach Tate, others knew him as the voice of the Richmond Spiders, but I'm proud to say I knew him as a friend. Mr. Tate was a valued asset for not only workforce and career development, but also Henrico County and the state. He was always there, willing to help support our students in any way possible, and was willing to speak up for CTE because he truly believed in the programs. For me personally, he was always there, providing those extra words of encouragement and that little push to keep working hard to achieve more. It's only apparent, it's only appropriate that we recognize the winner of the Ray Tate Memorial Award in February, since February is the Career and Technical Education Month. As we strive to keep our programs on the cutting edge, the value of career and technical education has never been more important. New and emerging technologies are changing every aspect of the workplace. In Henrico County Public Schools, we're striving to meet the needs of our community and our workforce. Our challenge is not just providing programs that are relative in today's workplace, but to make sure we're preparing our students for careers that may not even exist yet. This is where the support of people like this year's recipient is so important. Before I ask the winner of this year's award to come forward, I'd like to talk just a little bit about some of the many things that this person has done for the county. The recipient of this year's Ray Tate Memorial Award has gone the extra mile to help provide support for our CTE students and Henrico County Public Schools. No matter what the request, he is always willing to come forward and do whatever he can to support our students, and ultimately help move our community forward. Some of the attributes of this year's winners includes: being a true believer in the opportunities that schools and CTE can provide our young people; willing to help in whatever way he can to support and promote our programs; being a cheerleader for CTE and our students by telling everyone about the many great things going on and encouraging them to get involved; being a true supporter, not just for CTE, but for all students in Henrico County. The success of career and technical education is due to the hard work of many individuals. Our teachers, our school counselors, administrators, CTE and business advisory councils, and support of our staff help make CTE programs what they are. But this individual, I am proud to say, has gone above and beyond as always, and I'm about to recognize him, but I'm going to give out one example. Two years ago, when we were looking for drivers for students for graduation, this individual, I made a phone call, he said, "Where do you want me, who should I pick up?", and I'm there. And he was there to drive kids around the racetrack. So please join me in recognizing this year's winner of the Ray Tate Award, Mr. Ray Beasley, if you would please join me up front. You probably won't talk to me anymore.
I'm going to take a picture of Mr. Beasley.
Congratulations again, Mr. Beasley, on your receiving the Ray Tate Memorial Award.
Thank you. As Mac will tell you, I'm a little surprised he tricked me, because he asked me to come out and say a few words on behalf of CTE, and I wrote something. So I'm going to read it anyway. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell and staff, I'm very grateful for this opportunity to speak today. When I was asked if I would come say a few words regarding my passion for CTE learning, I knew I had to do it. Immediately, I self-identified two major hurdles I would have to overcome. First, how could I adequately justify my passion for the value of CTE education? Second, when have any of you ever heard me advocate for anything using just a few words? First and foremost, I want to say thank you for everything you collectively have already done that has enabled so many of our students to have access to a technical education. It is my firm biased belief that our school system can compete with any jurisdiction in this state at providing this amazing developmental opportunity. I'm not sure if Henrico County citizens have fully vetted all the opportunities that arise from a technical education. Often, those of us who are very passionate about CTE focus on its economic potential from a career perspective. I would like to also highlight the impact it has on strengthening our intellectual abilities and our daily living. Structure, organization, thought processing are all just some of the key ingredients of both an academic and technical education. But when it comes to obtaining a technical education, nothing compares to participating in a hands-on life skills education. That is why I believe CTE is such a valuable tool for impacting the lives of even exceptional education students. Your financial investment is just one of the many reasons why I'm so very proud of your leadership in CTE. While I come before you with gratitude for what has already been done, I am praying you consider doing even more. Though I consider myself a passionate advocate for technical education, I fully understand that I am nowhere near its greatest advocate. I believe my God of the Angel Armies must be a CT's greatest advocate. Why else would he have allowed his son to be a carpenter? And I have no doubt he would have assigned Mac Baten the responsibility of running a program to develop his son. So I got you back. Finally, let me say this. I want to thank each and every one of you collectively. I think you're underpaid. It's got to be an amazing, difficult job to have to go home every day trying to figure out what holes in the dike you have to plug next. But for those of us that volunteer and are in the weeds of every element of this school, we know that you work hard. There are things that need to be done, but I also believe there are things that you're getting done. So personally, I thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thanks, and congratulations again on the award. Our next item is the Henrico Highlight, and so this evening, I'm pleased to share a video that will showcase the innovative teaching and learning taking place in classrooms all across our county, from science-inspired art to problem-solving solutions to community problems. Our students are demonstrating the five Cs as creative and critical thinkers. The video also highlights how one school is using a popular video game to engage students in creating a virtual tour of their school. Let's take a look.
As we pass the midpoint for the academic year, our county schools continue to display innovative learning in a variety of ways. Like at Ridge Elementary, where students used their knowledge of fractions to program the paths of spheroids. Science-inspired art at Knuckles Farm, where the entire school collected recycled plastics and used them to create a fish sculpture. The goal was to bring awareness about pollution in our oceans. After reading the story, "The Little Ant", Gaeton Elementary students had a lesson on empathy that came with the challenge. Groups of students had to figure out the best way to share an uneven amount of cookies. Creativity was the challenge at Glenn Lee, where small groups developed their own logos, chants, and secret handshakes. It was information and activity at Rivers Edge, as the PE class learned about the food groups and participated in some fun challenges about the topic. Domain and range were the topics of math class at Fairfield Middle, which led to some creative, hands-on activities. Students at Hungry Creek used Minecraft to create a virtual version of their school to help new students get acquainted with the building and programs. At the academy, at Virginia Randolph, students were excited to discuss the book Ghost Boys as they offered theories to where the story was going.
There you go. Perfect.
The biostatistics class at Godwin High School continues to gather quantitative data on the student population. They are analyzing the local perception of COVID-19. At Freeman, Project Maverick is underway, where groups of seniors present a community problem and work toward a solution. Recently, each group explained their ideas to a panel for feedback and guidance. The Center for the Arts at Henrico High School held their annual symposium, where students spent the day working with professionals from the performing arts community. Beyond the classroom, February was also a time of celebrations and performances. Like at Harvey Elementary, where they celebrated the 90th Day of School with a special 1990s theme. Staff from a number of elementary schools gathered for some friendly competition as they played each other in a volleyball tournament. At Deep Run High School, it was the CIT Kickoff, where students from the Center for Information Technology help local organizations with their techno-needs. There was excitement in high schools all over the county as student athletes signed their letters of intent as they committed to play sports at the college level. We've also seen a wide range of celebrations and programs for Black History Month, like at Tuckahoe Middle School, where students decorated their classroom doors to showcase the many achievements of African-Americans past and present. At Highland Springs High School, counselors shared their favorite works of poetry that reflect the Black experience. And finally, second graders at Mayford gave the ultimate tribute as they put on a choral concert for Black History Month.
Lots going on across Henrico County schools over the past month, and certainly enjoy highlighting that for everyone. All right, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Shea.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Ms. Uggburn, would you read our mission statement for us, please?
Glad to. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Uggburn. The next item on our agenda is public forum. If you signed up in advance to speak and have not yet received your number, if you would make sure you check in in the lobby area where you can receive your number for public forum. This is the time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance. Speakers will be given two minutes to address the school board. We will follow the sign-up list, and the board will not hear from speakers this evening who have not signed up in advance. Those who have signed up to speak may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation and the subject of your remarks. Any use of profanity or inappropriate language will be ruled out of order. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers are allotted two minutes to address the school board. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive notice from the chairperson when time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to speakers this evening. However, we appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and for providing your input. Our first speaker is speaker number one. Is speaker number one present? All right. Speaker number two? One second, let's test the microphone. Can you do a testing? All right, wait, I think we got a thumbs up. Let's just make sure it's... Oh, I got thumbs down. Even if we can hear you, I want to make sure it's going to go through to the live stream for... So give me a testing? No, hold on. I'm getting a no from upstairs. Is it on?
Maybe the mic will just have her pause for a minute.
Okay, we're just going to pause for a moment. We want to make sure those listening can hear your remarks as well. Thank you. All right, let's try that.
All right, third time's a charm.
All right, upstairs, we're good? Okay, wonderful, thank you for your patience.
Great. I am Elena Esby, Deep Run High School mother. I know some of you are cringing right now, but first I want to thank those of you who conceded to the unmasking law, and those who are instrumental in stopping the discriminatory athletic testing. I care deeply and unapologetically about freedom, democracy, and human rights. I'm the child of Cuban refugees, and I'm from a socialist country, so communism and scholarly indoctrination are deeply personal. My mother tells of how in school in Cuba, political dissidents in classrooms would tell students to put their heads on their desks and pray to God for candy. They would tell the kids to raise their heads, and there would be no candy. Then they'd tell them to cover their eyes again and pray to Castro for candy. The kids would open their eyes, and there would be candy. Indoctrination of children is the lifeblood of communism, and we're allowing this to propagate in our schools. You are doing it yourselves by perpetuating discrimination and manipulation of unmasked and unvaccinated students or staff by hosting vaccination clinics, and just today, patting yourselves on the back for single-handedly reducing COVID numbers through discriminatory practices. While we have made significant strides in the past several days, we still have much to do to back out of the path we've gone down and to ensure our students get back to learning. Here are just a few of those things. First, I need you to fix the damage done to our students to whom learning was refused for the past four weeks. They, including my own, have fallen woefully behind and need to learn their materials so they can catch back up. Stop vaccination clinics, focus those resources on teaching instead. Force teachers to update grades promptly so parents can help with the backlog of learning, not find out a month later how far behind the kids are. Stop CRT, social-emotional learning, Wellness Wednesdays, and instead teach teachers what it means to be inclusive and focus on curriculum. Stop illegally surveying children, violating PPR by failing to provide adequate notice or transparency, and not honoring those who do opt out. Stop teachers from discriminating against students who are unmasked and unvaccinated, like Ms. Lawrence, who refuses to interface with any unmasked student and puts up signs to that effect, or the chorus teacher who has to class today to vote on whether or not to wear masks. Let teachers take off their masks.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is number three.
How are you guys doing today? My name's Christopher Holmes, I live in Short Pump. I've got a daughter that's in Henrico County School. I've got a wife that works for Henrico County Public Schools. I'm here to speak on mask mandates, of course, just like everybody else. But I just want, before I speak, I just want to show you something. When everyone tells you to put a mask on to protect you from COVID, I was sitting at home the other day, and I looked at my daughter's mask collection, sitting across from me on the couch, and she had about four masks just thrown up over there like that, and they're all crumbled together. She's been wearing them since August. You know, even though we have a brand-new box over there, kids don't know anything about masks. When they go to school, they share their snacks, they high-five each other, they hug each other, they talk, they get off the bus, they hang together, they go over each other's houses. Wearing a mask in school is not going to keep the kid from catching COVID. They're all together all day doing everything they want to do. All these people in here, they go out to the Super Bowl, 300,000 people unmasked screaming. So if you think that these masks did anything, they did nothing. Right now, I've got baby powder right here. I was going to put it on my hands and then put my mask back on my face, so you can see the germs that get on your mask from cross-contamination. That's why masks work in hospitals, because it's sterile in a hospital. In a school, it's not sterile. Kids do things all day, they play with their face, they touch these masks all day, we need to get rid of these masks. Now, aside from that, I want to thank you, though. I thank you for not discriminating against unvaccinated athletes anymore, because even if you have the vaccine, you still have the COVID germs in your nasal cavities, and when you sneeze, it still gets on everybody. So unvaccinated, vaccinated, it doesn't matter.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Our next speaker is number four. Is speaker number four present? All right, speaker number five?
My name is Rachel Kulaq, I have a student at Deep Run High School, and I thought I was coming here to speak about the testing for our athletes, but I've happily found out that that is no more. So glad to hear it, that there'll be no more discrimination, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, they can play their sport. And so I just would like to say that I'm glad the kids are able to go without masks, and I'm hopeful and glad that we're moving forward to some semblance of normalcy where the kids can interact. We do have some issues still at Deep Run with the teachers. My student is personally affected by that, and so I'm hoping we can get that straightened out. I understand people have anxieties and fears about this, but these kids deserve to be able to move on and be able to fully embrace their education again. So I hope that sometime in the near future that will be dealt with, and that we can just send our kids and not have to worry about this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Speaker number six? Speaker number seven? Speaker number eight? Speaker number nine? Speaker number 10? Speaker number 11? Speaker number 12? Speaker number 13?
My name is Monica Hutchinson, I live in the Brooklyn District, and I am not here to talk to you about masks today, but I am here to talk to you about Black History, because this is the end of Black History Month. And I just want to remind everybody that Black History is American history. My middle and youngest attend Hermitage, a majority Black high school. And for Black History Month, there has been very little taught. My middle child is currently learning about Greece and history, Greece. You can tell the teachers are visibly uncomfortable discussing Black History Month? Representation matters, as almost all of their teachers are white. The one Black teacher my youngest has is the gym teacher. It's bad enough that it took HCPS until 4:30 PM on February 1st to even acknowledge Black History Month. But to add insult to injury, on the social media post, you shared Governor Youngkin's Facebook post and his words, which is disrespectful, considering he's the one who's trying to prevent accurate history from being taught. The erasure of Black history and Black students must stop. And since everyone loves MLK, let me leave you with some of his words. Whites, it must frankly be said, are not putting in a similar mass effort to re-educate themselves out of their racial ignorance. With each modest advance, the white population promptly raises the argument that Black Americans have come far enough. So I wanted to make sure I read that and I ended that, because everyone likes to say I have a dream for MLK. But what you don't know is towards the end of his life, he said that dream had become a nightmare. I need you to make sure that you are teaching all history, because Black history is American history, and my children have every right to be empowered and to see themselves reflected in a history book.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Our next speaker is speaker number 14? Speaker number 15? Oh, 14, I'm so sorry!
Good evening. My name is Tanille Moore. I'm in the Verona District, my kids go to Elko Middle School. I'm not here to talk about masks. I'm here to talk about the serious threat that a student made to a young 11-year-old girl. He said that he was going to get a gun and shoot her in the head, and he got one day of in-school suspension. gun and shoot her in the head. And he got one day of in-school suspension. We all know, in this room and outside of this room, that school shootings are a thing. Colleges, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, daycares, workplaces, grocery stores, Apple stores, everywhere, they're a thing, okay? He got one day of in-school suspension. Unacceptable. Unacceptable. Because if I say that to any one of you, best believe I'm gonna be in handcuffs, right? Right. Okay, this child has access to guns. And we all know that crimes against women, young girls, and children are statistically on the rise. But yet he got one day of in-school suspension. Furthermore, a student at Elko, earlier in the school year, made a comment to my son on the soccer team that he was going to get a gun and shoot him in the head because he didn't like the fact that my daughter, who was one of three female soccer team managers, was out there playing soccer with the boys. And yes, she's good. They play travel ball. So he didn't like that. What happened to him? Nothing. They conducted that unreliable threat assessment. And what makes it so bad is the young, the boy that told it to the girl said, "Oh, I say that to everybody." Well, that's a problem. I want to see him expelled. And if I don't see the expulsion, I will have your jobs. And I'm not playing. Do something about it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Speaker Number Fifteen.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you to end all restrictions regarding parent and volunteers entering the school building. I thank you for the little progress we've seen. More needs to be done. Let us help in all capacities and let us do so without a mask mandate as well. All year long, we've been told that teachers are tired and overwhelmed. For what it's worth, I believe them. If this is the case, why then do you continue to restrict parents and volunteers in the school buildings? I see job postings for substitutes and pleas from school board members for help, yet I can't volunteer my time freely. I can't help the library and shelf books. Prior to your update today, I wasn't allowed to make copies for teachers during the school day. Even with your new volunteer guidance, that's long overdue, I can't volunteer to be a parent reader or listen to a reader who needs some extra practice. I can't eat lunch with my kids on their birthdays. My husband can't volunteer to be a watchdog. We can't participate in an in-person career day. I can't set up special teacher treats during the school day or help facilitate classroom parties. Many parents are ready and willing to help, but we continue to be kept out and restricted. Meanwhile, there are vaccine clinics that are held at certain schools, sometimes during the hours of the school day. And Ms. Shay, you have the privilege to go to your kids' classrooms. I heard that you did science experiments this week. You read to my son this fall. Why can't I do that? Once parents and volunteers are no longer restricted, I ask you to make the masking optional. My kids were part of a small group that didn't wear masks once the EO was signed. While I continue to be appalled at how that whole thing was handled, I couldn't be prouder of them. They showed a lot of courage, they did it with kindness and respect. And guess what? The environment has been completely changed. We're moving forward. We're getting back to normalcy. So please allow parents and volunteers to support our students, teachers, and administrators. Let us get to the building without restriction so that we can help like we know how to do, like we've always done.
Thank you, Ms. Edens. Speaker Number Sixteen.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Kevin Edens. I've been vested with this system for the last 15 years. I've been a teacher. Now I have three kids. And I actually have the privilege of having two of you represent me, one that I live in and one that I work in. And I just want to express how disillusioned I've been with this system, the school board, you know, and I don't want to rehash the whole last year and a half. I really don't want to do that. But last year was a very miserable year. We come into this year, and I really don't want to talk about masks anymore, but you let the General Assembly do the hard work that you didn't do. And now this is 2022, not 2020, not 2021. We need to move forward. The pandemic is over. We need to move past that. And this school system needs to get back to where we were two years ago, where we had people that had differing ideologies in my school. We all got along. But you know what the one thing we had in common? We all wanted high standards for our students. We all wanted rigor and critical thinking. But that's not the case anymore because we're trying to do catch-up. So I want the school board, I want y'all to start talking about academic standards and how we can improve education for every single kid, not only in my school, but other schools as well. That's where I want y'all to be focused on. Now, I will go ahead and tell you that I am on military leave, so I'm not in the classroom at the moment. But I will return at some point. So I would love to get past this point where we're focused on masks, we're focused on treating people differently because of what they're wearing on their face. I want my kids to come in their school, at Tucker Elementary School, and be able to see their teachers' faces if the teacher chooses. That's all I'm asking. Academic standards, and let's remove the mask mandates for teachers, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Edens.
Thank you.
All right, Speaker Number Seventeen. Speaker Number Seventeen. All right, this concludes our public forum. Thank you to all who participated and shared your feedback. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the minutes from the January 13th, 2022 work session and the January 27th, 2022 work session and monthly meeting.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes have been approved.
All right, for the next item, I am recommending that the school board approve the recommended fiscal year 2022-2023 annual financial plan as previously presented.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the recommended FY2022-2023 annual financial plan as presented.
Motion made by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Uggburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the financial plan has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the school board accept be part of the Music Grant Award funding of $1,000 from the music and arts organization.
Is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept the grant award funding of $1,000 from the music and arts organization.
Motion made by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the grant award has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I am asking that the school board accept an increased allocation for the Integrated English Literacy and Civics, or IELC Civics Education Grant Award, funding of $26,000, rather, $60.36 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept the increased allocation of grant award funding of $26,060.26, $60.36 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Moved by Ms. Uggburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the funds have been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board accept state set-aside grant funding under the American Rescue Plan Act in the amounts of $961,388 for summer programs, as well as $1,330,234 for before and after-school programs.
Is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept the state set-aside grant funding under the American Rescue Plan Act in the amounts of $961,388 for summer programs and $1,330,234 for before and after-school programs.
Thank you. Motion made by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Uggburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the funds have been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve a proposal from Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $186,000 for new outdoor lighting on the tennis court area at Glen Allen High School.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I know this is something Ms. Consella has been very excited about, along with her government counterpart on the board, a supervisor. So Ms. Consella, would you like to make this motion?
I sure would. And thank you for mentioning my counterpart, Dan Schmidt. He and I did work together. And I also want to thank Dr. Cashwell and members of the team, Mr. Pritchard specifically, for working with us to make this happen. So now I move that the school board approve a proposal from Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $186,000 for new outdoor lighting on the tennis court area at Glen Allen High School.
Moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the proposal has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve the proposals from H2I Group Incorporated in the amount of $139,582.87 for the replacement of the main gym floor at Rolf Middle and the amount of $154,587.16 for the replacement of the auxiliary gym floor at Freeman High School.
Is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the proposals from H2I Group Incorporated in the amount of $139,582.87 for the replacement of the main gym floor at Rolf Middle School and in the amount of $154,587.16 for the replacement of the auxiliary gym floor at Freeman High School.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Uggburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the proposal has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board award a construction contract to the Carpentry and Painting Experts LLC in the amount of $133,400 for the replacement of lighting and partial ceiling lighting at Godwin High School.
Is there a motion? I can't do this one, so...
I move, I move on your behalf, Madam Chair, that the school board award a construction contract to the Carpentry and Painting Experts LLC in the amount of $133,400 in order to authorize the superintendent to execute the contract in a form approved by the county attorney and to execute change orders within the scope of the project budget not to exceed 15% of the original contract amount.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the construction contract has been awarded.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board accept the school bus driver incentive grant award in the amount of $59,488.41 to support transportation with the recruitment and retention of transportation drivers.
I move that the school board accept the grant award in the amount of $59,488.41.
Moved by Ms. Uggburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the grant award has been accepted.
Thank you. The next items are consent items, and so they can be taken in a block. I am requesting your approval of the following. The acceptance of monthly financial statement and budgetary status reports for the month ending January 31, 2022. The acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services for the month ending January 31, 2022. The approval of personnel items. The approval of the school health advisory board membership and officer slate, as was previously presented. And the adoption of the V SBA business honor roll resolutions.
Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I move that the school board approve the agenda items 14.01, 14.02, 14.03, and 14.04 and 14.05, as previously described and recommended by the superintendent.
Moved by Mrs. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the consent items are approved.
Thank you, Chair Shay and members of the board. That concludes any items I have for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do we have any unfinished business? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business? Hearing none. I would like to take a moment just to recognize Mike Taylor from HEFF that is here. Thank you for being here, Mr. Taylor, and for all the extraordinary work you and your organization do supporting all of our schools. We appreciate you. The last item on the agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting will be a work session. It's scheduled on Thursday, March 10th, 2022, at 1 o'clock PM. The meeting time may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.